He's here. Okay. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I call the meeting of November 10th, 2020 to order. It is nearly 10:30, just for the record. The Finance Committee did go a little past their regularly scheduled time, which is all good, but we're starting a little bit late because there was robust debate in finance. May I ask, would Member Shaun Noonan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain standing as we will move into our invocation immediately after. Member Noonan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. I'd like to welcome Reverend Dr. James Miller. I've had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Miller previously. He is with the DuPage African Methodist Episcopal Church in Lisle, and we're honored to have you here, sir, to lead us in invocation. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin, and forgive my moment. The screen went dark here as I was sitting here, but thank you for the opportunity and board. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, God of life and health and strength, we bless your holy name today. God, we pray for this DuPage County Board as these leaders again undertake great responsibility. We pray wisdom and courage. We pray today, God, for all facets, all residents of our county. God, today we pray for schools. We know you revere children. God, we pray for teaching, teachers, administration, and staff. We pray for hospitals, God, staff, patients, all essential workers. God, we pray for businesses. Lord, make another small miracle and bring some coverage and deliverance. God, we pray for all law enforcement agencies, the incarcerated, the courts, the police officers, and the suspects. May all be given safety and due process. God, hear us praying this morning. God, we pray for all the citizens, residents, and neighbors who live in this community of DuPage County, that we may live together not only in peace, but love, that we can grow from tolerance to embrace. So, God, all these petitions we give to you now, and some of them may seem impossible, but you're the God who is able, and the impossible becomes possible with you. So have your way with this meeting, God, and respecting all other faiths. This Christian pastor prays in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. That was beautiful. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order, I will entertain a motion to permit the members of the Board attending by telephone to participate and vote in this meeting. Is there a motion here? It was so moved by Member Pachowski and seconded from Member Larson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chaplain. Covert.
Here.
Desart. DeCiani. Ekoff.
Here.
Elliott.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Kuduski.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Noonan.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Renahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Salmon.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
And Zay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Onto the Order of Chairman's Report, we have a presentation, and I'd like to invite Shaun Noonan, Member Noonan, and our favorite ETSB Executive Director, Linda Zerwin, to relocate up near the front here, the podium. The Emergency Telephone System Board funds and provides leadership to our county's 911 emergency system. It is a primary responsibility of local government to provide these public safety services to our residents. So thanks to the leadership of ETSB Chairman Shaun Noonan and Executive Director Linda Zerwin, our emergency telephone system is an example of a lean, efficient, exemplary agency. Today Shaun and Linda are here to present the ETSB budget, so please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. Good morning. On behalf of the 12 members of the Emergency Telephone System Board, I am pleased to have this opportunity to share the ETSB FY '21 budget with you. The 911 system has approximately $45 million in assets, and over the last 10 years, working with our municipal partners, this system has been streamlined for efficient delivery of critical police, fire, and EMS services through interoperable systems for the 62 police and fire agencies within the system. 2021 will be a legislative year for ETSB as the surcharge is scheduled to sunset December of 2021. The State 911 Board is already working on updates to the legislation and administrative rules. Before I turn it over to ETSB Executive Director Linda Zerwin to review the balance of the budget for you, I would like to comment on the first highlight, the consolidation of the Sheriff's PSAP into Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center. The go-live date of this consolidation was last Monday, November 2nd. This brings a DuPage 911 system to two PSAP, two less than the number required by state statute. Consolidation has taken 12 years to complete through the partnership of the municipalities and fire protection districts with the county and ETSB. And with that, I'd like to turn this presentation over to Linda Zerwin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, thanks. For other highlights we have, and in terms of the consolidation, several years ago, we rerouted all the wireless 911 calls to be more efficient. This was not possible with the number of dispatch centers we had previously. In that first year, we reduced the number of transfers, which is a delay for the system, by over 300,000. Now with the sheriff consolidating with ACDC or Addison Center, we look forward to an additional reduction in the transfer of calls because, as you know, the sheriff's department was only dispatching police, so every fire EMS request had to be transferred to another center. So we look forward to making even greater numbers, and we'll report that next year to you. Also, within the consolidation, in the highlights of consolidation, people ask me often if this is working and if this is the way we should be going. The annual savings to ETSB directly because of the reduction of the number of geographic locations is $2 million a year. Indirect costs result in about $7 million in dispatch personnel costs over time because in 2009, when we really started this, there were 217 dispatchers. Today, there's approximately 140. So that's a $7 million savings. Those are significant savings to the system, to the county, and to the municipalities that were providing service for their citizens. Next slide, please. So I'd like this slide because one of the things people don't understand is that ETSB exists to provide a 911-enhanced system, and this is an excellent graphic picture of the fact that 90% or 89% of the money is going to the support of the systems. It's a low personnel cost and high production on an efficient system. So these are contracted services in our operating costs. The next slide. I just have to brag a little bit because those first four lines say we have a budget decrease of about 12%. The reality is, we came in at under 14% reduction, and I want to highlight that. And then through the course of the budget discussion, the ETS Board members decided to include some capital purchases, which impacted the overall cost of maintenance and operations, which brought us to a 12% decrease. Those are natural reductions in service based on consolidation. We didn't cut anything in terms of service. This is just based on consolidation, reduction of phone lines, and other services that we no longer need because of consolidation. It's a huge effort. So here you see, you know, it's a nice overview of where we're seeing reductions, and that million, 1.1 million, is really operating costs, as I said, in the telecommunications line. Interestingly enough, in 2009, when we started, that telecommunications line was $2 million. Today, the telecommunications line and operations is just slightly over $1 million. Again, a good reduction in costs. Under capital, you see a significant reduction there, and that basically has to do with the fact that we've finished so many major projects, as you know, in the last 36 to 48 months. The systems have built two brand-new centers, and we've refreshed hardware, software, or replaced systems. So the decrease you see there is really just the fact that we've, we're winding down on those major projects. And then something new this year that I haven't really highlighted for you in the past, the previous Finance Director, Paul Rafek, and Baker Tilly, we worked on a way to allocate money for the major capital assets that Chairman Noonan mentioned in the beginning. We have about $45 million in assets, so it is part of our fiduciary responsibility to plan for the replacement of that so that it doesn't impact the county or the municipalities and to be good stewards of that. We've been fortunate enough that we've shown consolidation reduces our costs, and so we allocated in 2020 $11 million for the set aside for that replacement and planning for the future, and projection for 2021 is that the Board will allocate another 7.5, or I'm sorry, 6.5. So we're about, we're getting close to where we need. Replacement of radios alone is roughly $2 million, it was roughly $24 million. So you see that this type of savings plan is important to the health of the 911 system and moving forward, and if we don't start now, we're not going to be ready when we need those things. Next slide. I promised I'd move along quickly. So revenue, we have some. We've gone from, you know, 50 cents in 2009 to $1.50 per device per month. 911 services are really funded by two things, the surcharge and general fund money at the municipal and county level. So where we're getting to at this point is that we're going to be able to start looking at how we make some relief to, now, the county's seen that in the closure of their center, but there are some additional expenses we'll look at, but also for the municipalities. Because unfortunately, the 14 million roughly that we collect isn't enough to fund what is roughly a $25 million a year operation when you get to the personnel costs of all those dispatchers and personnel in the PSAPs themselves. So, and I like to show this slide in this way because I think it's important to understand that we're about four months behind in the collection of revenue on any given time. So the money goes to the state, and then it comes back to us. So we're doing pretty well, and, you know, some of the risks that we'll have is what happens at the state level in terms of any sweeps or concerns about money there. The cost of the statewide new 911 network has not been awarded yet, so we don't know if that will have an impact on the surcharge that we receive. And as Chairman Noonan mentioned, there'll be a sunset in December 2021. Nobody anticipates that there won't be funding. It'll just be a matter of how it's allocated, and that's under discussion today. But until we know what the statewide network costs will be, it's difficult for us to know what that impact will be at this point. So we're being a little bit conservative on our replacement schedule until we're aware of that. Seems like we're done, but we're not because the sheriffs closed their PSAP. In the coming months, this Board will see an intergovernmental agreement between the two remaining PSAPs, Ducomm and ACDC or Addison, and will need to update the ordinance to reflect some of those changes and also to be in line with some of the changes that the county has made in their procurement ordinance. So those are some things that you'll be seeing from us and building that forward. This is a body of work that has taken over 10 years, and there are people who have been on this Board a long time who will not be returning. Mr. Healy. And I just want to say that this is something to be proud of because, as the Director of the ETSB, this Board and the previous Board members and the people who will come after you have been, and I hope the people who will come after will continue to be as supportive as this group of people have been to get us to the mission. It's been a true partnership between the municipalities and the county to provide the best class of 911 service. And it's been a pleasure to work under Chairman Noonan. Not only is he a user, which provides some good guidance, but he has been an excellent chairman for the deployment of our last two major systems. So with that, I will take any questions that you have.
Anyone? Anyone? Questions? Questions? Seeing none? Anyone online there? Doesn't look like there is. So thorough, Linda, so thorough, so complete. Yes, well, thank you for the good work that you do. It really is, you know, Linda, we've worked together, going back to my days in the legislature when we...
State's Attorney's Office?
Yeah, and then the State's Attorney's Office before that. Yeah, it's been, it's been quite a journey. But thank you for the good work that you do. Thank you, Shaun, for the fabulous leadership that you provided at ETSB, and thank you for joining us and giving us some valuable information today. Thank you. No further questions. So we're going to move on. I'm going to offer some Chairman's remarks, if I may, please. As I advised you yesterday in the email that I sent out, the Governor's Office and the Illinois Department of Public Health have advised us that DuPage County is among those in our region entering Tier Two mitigation for COVID-9. Our region has seen increasing positivity rates, moving higher than 13.3% on a seven-day rolling average. As you know, in DuPage County, we have aggressively fought to reduce the spread of COVID, COVID-19, I should say, not COVID-9, in our community. We have funded our own county COVID testing site and developed an expansive contact tracing effort. We've created an extensive public awareness campaign encouraging residents to wear a mask, wash their hands, and watch their distance. There's nothing more important than keeping our residents healthy. So we will continue to work with our mayors to reduce the impact of COVID-19 within DuPage County and throughout our region. Finally, it has been a remarkable two weeks since we last met. That huge Notre Dame win, the remarkable weather that we've been having, and, oh, yes, there was an election. I know we are waiting for certified election results, and we will take the time to congratulate and welcome those taking new county seats, and we will recognize and congratulate those departing. I thank everyone, everyone who campaigned for public office and those who have served faithfully as elected officials. Governing, governing, is the difficult work we do between elections. So we are very fortunate to share this work with some talented and dedicated individuals. All of your efforts are deeply appreciated, and all I can say is thank you at this point. So we move on to the next order of business entitled "Public Comment." Public Comment, this is where we welcome folks from the public to share their thoughts, and I'm advised that we do not have anyone here in person, but we do have one individual who shared some thought, wants to make public comment via electronically. So according to our rules, member of the public shall be afforded time, and we have welcomed these comments both in person and online. And with that, I turn it over to you, Mr. McCarthy. First comments from Edgar Powell, I should say, the only comments from Edgar Powell. It's regarding election in minutes. It states, "I would like to commend the county clerk's office for overseeing this year's election. There was an unprecedented turnout, especially via vote by mail and early voting. I appreciate that the clerk's office has been able to count the ballots and publish the updated results in a timely fashion. Furthermore, I appreciate that the county Board will be amending its minutes for the meeting held on November 12, 2019. This amendment will help ensure the Board's records are accurate going forward. I hope that the county clerk's office will be taking appropriate steps to ensure that similar issues or mistakes are avoided in the future." That concludes Mr. Powell's comment, and that's all I have. Okay. Short and sweet. So we move on to the order entitled Consent. There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Onto the order of County Board, Member Jim Zay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Just one item today. I move on CBR 62120, the 2021 County Board Meeting Schedule.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
And Tornatori. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Zay. Onto the order of Finance, Member Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, under Finance Report, I just want to, couldn't let today pass without recognizing the 245th birthday of the United States Marine Corps, except for five of all my brothers and sisters in the Marine Corps, and tomorrow's Veterans Days, and we always want to acknowledge those who've served their country, and so I want to acknowledge them as well and thank them for their service. With that, I would move approval of FIR 61720 Resolution to address any remaining unused CRF funds.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Kuduski.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move through FIR 61820, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Home Weatherization Program Grant.
There's been a motion and a second.
$346,142.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson. Aye. Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Kuduski. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move through FIR 61920, Acceptance and Appropriation of Additional Funding, the ILD CEO Grant in the Amount of $128,559.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Larson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remove FIR 62020, Approval of Issuance of Payments Under the Small Business Relief Grant Program in the Amount of $348,510.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Larson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remove FIR 63120, Resolution approving the grant agreement with Poise for Success in the Amount of $37,950.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
And Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Larson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. And Kuduski. Thank you, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items G, H, I, and J failed at Finance, so I would then move to combine K through O.
Been a motion to combine K through O. There's been a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. And Kuduski.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The items are combined. Please proceed, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then move FIR 62820, Recommendation of Approval of Payment to DuPage Health Department, in the Amount of Nine Hundred and Forty thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars twenty-six cents. It's a COVID item, as are the rest of these. FIR 63320, Approval of Payment to ETSB, in the Amount of Forty-nine thousand six forty-one fifty. FIR 62920, Ratification of Procurement of Goods and Services, in the Amount of Three Hundred and Twenty-seven thousand one eighty-five seventy-four. FIR 63020, Correction of Mr. Scrivener's Error Regarding the Intergovernmental Agreement to the Park Districts Under the CARES Act, and FIR 63220, Budget Transfers from Various Companies in Accounting Units.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. And Kuduski. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move to combine Agenda Items P through T, which are all insurance service contracts.
P through T. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
I didn't hear my name, sorry.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. And Kuduski.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of following contracts, all with Messero Insurance Services, FIP 29520, for the Workers' Compensation Insurance, in the Amount of One Hundred and Fifty-one thousand eight seventy-four. FIP 29620, for Employment Practices Liability Insurance, in the Amount of Forty-seven thousand nine sixteen. FIP 29720, for Cyber Liability Insurance, in the Amount of Fifty-one thousand seven eighty-eight. FIP 29820, for Property Insurance for the County Properties, in the Amount of Two Hundred and Fifty thousand seven hundred and ninety-four. And FIP 29920, for General Auto Vehicle and Liability Insurance, in the Amount of Two Hundred and Eighty thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy. And Kuduski. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move to combine Agenda Items U through Z.
U through Z. Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Hart.
Aye.
Healy. And Kuduski. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of the following contracts, which are all for the purchase of personal protective equipment as related expenses. FIP 30020 to Yates Enterprises, in the Amount of One Million Three Hundred and Thirty-nine thousand dollars. FIP 30120 to W Diamond Group, in the Amount of Eighty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. FIP 30220 to Unipac Corporation, in the Amount of Thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars. FIP 30320 to Next Shield, in the Amount of Six Hundred and Ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. These are all not-to-exceed contracts, by the way. FIP 30420 to HepsiBa Trading, in the Amount of Forty-eight thousand. And FIP 30520 to DVL, DVA, MPG Tandem, in the Amount of Thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. And Kuduski.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And finally, I move approval of FIO 9320, Second Amendment to the DuPage County Code Ordinance, regarding Regulation of Adult Entertainment Facilities, as amended and financed to waive the first reading.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. And Kuduski. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Larson. On to the Order of Public Works, Member Jim Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to waive committee and approved directly by the County Board, FMR 61620, Intergovernmental Agreement between County, City of Wheaton, County of DuPage Health Department, and the County of DuPage, for construction of the DuPage County Health Department Storage Garage.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Healy. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Thanks, buddy.
Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Clerk. Thanks, Mr. Healy. On to the Order of Technology, Member Greg Hart.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Real briefly, under Committee Update, I did want to echo Member Larson's comments around Veterans' Day tomorrow. We certainly honor all of our veterans from DuPage County. And as a reminder to something you mentioned in your last Chairman's remarks, Mr. Chairman, at the previous board meeting, we do have an interactive Veterans' Day portal that in lieu of, you know, public ceremonies that likely won't be happening this year because of COVID-19, this interactive portal on the DuPage County website allows all residents in DuPage and beyond to recognize veterans that are important to them. So I encourage you to utilize that, and members of the public to do the same. And just wanted to thank our IT staff, as well as the GIS staff that helped create it. So moving on to the items, I move on Item TEP 292-20, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Imaging Systems, Inc., Doing Business as Integrated Document Technologies.
Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. And Elliott.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 293-20, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to BDO USA LLP, Doing Business as SWC Technology Partners, for the Annual Software Maintenance of FireEye Security Software.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. And Elliott.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And lastly, I move on TEP 294-20, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Karasoff Technology Corporation, for annual support and hosting of Agenda and Minutes Meeting Management System software.
Second.
Motion and a second. Who is the second? Member Rutledge?
Yes.
Yeah, that was nice. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Hart?
Sorry, aye.
Healy. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson. Noonan. Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. And Elliott.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Member Hart. A fine report. On to the Order of Transportation, Member Don Pachowski.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. I would move to approve DTR 61520, Intergovernmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and Chicago Metropolitan Agency, for planning for the development of a new DuPage County Trails Plan.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani, Eckoff. Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy. Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson. Noonan. And Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Pachowski?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to combine and approve Agenda Items B to F, which are all approval of contracts.
Been a motion and a second to combine Items B through F, all those in, no, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplain, Covert.